All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:01 on the nose. We'll go ahead and get started with our city council meeting, final one in May. Hard to believe we're almost halfway through 2021. Got a decent agenda this evening, so we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to ask that we observe our moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I've spoken to a couple of you about this. We have an executive session on the agenda this evening. We have a gentleman here, Danny Williams, who wants--it's about a piece of property maneuver with him. I'd like for us to go ahead and adjourn to executive session to discuss that briefly while Danny is here in the interest of his time, if that's okay? We can go back in over there and talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, but before we do that, a special shout out this evening. Dave, you'll appreciate this. Luke Lee watches us every single council meeting. Did you know that?
Yes.
Luke Lee is Jerry and Karen's son up on Smithfield Street. And I saw the Lee men today at Don Paco's Mexican restaurant. And he was asking me some questions about the city. And he asked me point blank if this meeting was going to be televised the way the rest of them are. And I assured him it was going to, the Channel 3 would be there. So it got me to thinking. I called Karen. Luke doesn't know that this is coming, so Karen does make sure that he was there ready to watch the meeting. So Luke, we're glad you're watching. This is your shout out. Council says hello and thanks for watching.
Hello, Luke.
Everybody wave at Luke. I bet Luke is probably the youngest viewer regularly of our council meeting.
He's twenty-two now.
Yeah, just out of high school. So anyway, thanks for watching, Luke.
Four years ago.
Yeah, that is true. Time flies under the dare. Well, I feel like I was just in the band with Danny not too long ago, and that's been fifteen, sixteen years ago now. So anyway, so--
He's a mare in making.
That's right. Luke's a mare in making. So could we have a motion in a second to adjourn? Okay, thank you. We will be right back. This won't take too long, and then we'll resume our meeting.
So, what am I doing? There we go.
Okay. Thanks everybody for obliging us for a brief executive session about a property matter. There were no decisions made officially for that. It was just discussion had and per state code, we discuss those property matters in executive session with our city attorney. So, we are, I would entertain the notion that we come back to, or out of executive session into regular sessions.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Okay. Ayes have it. All right. We will proceed with our business. First up, we have Shane Jenkins, President of the West Virginia Strawberry Festival. He's asked to address us this evening and kind of give us a wrap-up of how the festival went over the weekend. So Shane, welcome.
Thank you, and thanks to the mayor and council for having me back this evening. And then of course, just thanks to the mayor, council, city employees for everything they did for us during festival and leading up to festival. I think we've strengthened our relationship this year and I look to, hope to see that for regrets in future years. I put some notes together here so if I stumbled through it, I put it together rather quickly so just stay with me. So again, just thanks on behalf of the board of directors to you all. Our events were tremendously successful this year. I think I saw a lot of you there. And if I didn't, again, just thanks for your support and thanks to those who came out. A lot of our, we were kind of put in a weird situation where the mask mandate for indoors got lifted. As I was actually standing beside the mayor at a coronation, I can't remember whether it was practice or actual coronation, but the mask mandate for indoors got lifted if you were vaccinated then. So that put us in kind of a different situation than what we had even planned for. But as we did all year, we adapted and we made it work. We just want to say thanks to the people who worked with us on that. The first responder agencies here in Buchanan and Upsher County, St. Joseph's and Community Care. We vaccinated over 100 people at our vaccination clinic that we had during festival, so that was awesome. We had a record high attendance at our cruise inn and a huge turnout for our craft show. Very successful band for, band and entertainment performances. Our events ran a lot more smoothly than in past recent years and we were happy to be able to provide multiple children's activities since they haven't been able to get out a whole lot. Our board shared memories at our wrap-up meeting that we had on Tuesday night. Festivals pass and we do that a lot. It just kind of helps us come back to our roots and realize what we're there for. And we kind of joked that we hoped someday that the 110th festival board of directors would share a memory when they danced and played in Jawbone with Professor Bubbles. Took part in the largest minor chord to date, sang at Strawberry Idol and were crowned the Jawbone Pool of Hoop champion. Our modified festival was really a blessing in disguise to us. We think a lot of people enjoyed it who came out. We were fortunate to have a very progressive group of individuals who heavily focused on our finances and the quality of our events. It really paid off for us. We made changes where needed and we also preserved our important festival traditions. We made improvements in accountability, financial standards and operations. And I think I've even convinced some people that the changes we made helped and changed our traditional rainy weather for this year too. Planning's already began for the 80th and it's in full swing. We're planning for a full festival. We have a lot of work to do ahead of us and again, I just can't say thank you enough to the community, the board of directors and everyone who came out and supported us this year. We put a strawberry back on the map in West Virginia and I'm proud of that. We gave a community hope, relief and inspiration in a time of quiet darkness and frowns. We created sound, light and smiles. We did what many people said we couldn't do and I'm proud to say that we did it safely and efficiently. As some of you know, our, our elections are approaching so there could be a potential that the next time you see a representative here from festival, it could be someone different. If that's the case, I just want to thank you all for everything that you've done for me and for festival. And just as a side note, the festival has talked briefly about the World Association of Marching Bands event that we're happening in 23 and we're fully on board to help without however we need to. So also I have a card that I'd like to present to the mayor and council on behalf of the board of directors just as a thank you for everything you did for us.
Thank you Shane.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, I'm a member of the officer at the American Legion and you know, we rented the strawberry festival this year a little small office because they needed an office. And, and I want to say thank you and thank them all because yep, it was fine. Okay, it was fine. Trash was an issue, but we, we got through it and I hope that you all will continue unless y'all find a bigger place for, a less expensive place to rent for your office. And I hope you'll continue using the little back office in the American Legion building. So it helps us and it helps you all a little bit too. So thank you.
Yeah, we were really happy to partner with you all and we appreciate that and everything you all did.
Yeah, we got a very nice card and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Shane, I want to say I think you did an excellent job and I was proud of the way everything was handled. I think everybody was just thrilled to death to be able to get out and visit and the kids felt, you know, were safe down their Jawbone and I think it was an excellent idea to put the vendors down there. I think the people actually probably made a lot more money there than they had otherwise. But down the road, I would love to see, and the strawberry festival will get a permanent home. They need a permanent home instead of just hopping from one place to another and having to pay the rent. So hopefully down the road, the city can maybe help out with that too because other, other festivals, big festivals have their own headquarters and that's what the strawberry festival needs. And hopefully you'll be president again.
I think from the city's perspective, we want to thank you all too for working with us. And I know that from your board, yourself and Gary Cannell and both Carrie and Alan Mills came to us and worked with us on changing some of the Friday and Saturday night cadence, you know, just to kind of change it up a little bit. I want to thank CJ and Randy from the city's perspective in helping, in helping get Jawbone to become the centerpiece for the festival. I think everybody I talked to all week, all week and weekend long was very, very, very positive about Jawbone being used and hoped that it stayed used in the future. So I hope that that's something that we can continue to, to improve and modify and, and continue to, to make a centerpiece for the festival when it comes to vendors and entertainment. So I appreciate on behalf of the council, the board, working with us and us working with the board to make that possible.
I spent a lot of time in Jawbone and up on Main Street both Friday and Saturday and heard a lot of great feedback. The, I think Jawbone is very, very well received as a great location, a lot of different age groups. As you mentioned, Mr. Bubbles was a big hit. The food vendors seemed to be happy. I'm sure there were some rumbles here or there. There's some people that can never, you know, never sell enough fries and never sell enough this and that and everything else. But from what I, you know, heard from the different people I spoke to, they were thrilled. And I'd like to thank Jerry and his crew, Brad Hawkins and everyone else that pitched in and helped from the city standpoint. And the two entities cooperated together nicely, first responders, the chief, Chief Audrey and Chief Kimble and everyone else involved. I just think it was a very well coordinated event from start to finish. And back in the day, you know, before you were born, I was involved with a lot of the earlier festivals and I know the, I know the responsibility it takes to shoulder that event, to produce that event. So, well done.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful if we have a joint meeting of some kind and go over feedback from our end. I know there was some electrical stuff, challenges. I don't know anything about the chief. But sit down and have an open conversation about, from our perspective, your perspective and how can we do this better together? So if there's an opportunity to schedule something, I don't know whether we can do it through city hall or something, but the sooner the better before we forget about it and start planning for next year.
I agree. And I've had that brought to my attention already too from board members that like to meet and kind of brainstorm again like we did before.
Yeah.
For that.
Officially for that, it was just discussion had. And per state code, we discuss those property matters in executive session with our city attorney. So we are, I would entertain a motion that we come back to, or out of executive session into regular session.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I just have it. All right, we will proceed with our business. First up, we have Shane Jenkins, President of the West Virginia Strawberry Festival. He's asked to address us this evening and kind of give us a wrap up of how the festival went over the weekend. So Shane, welcome.
Thank you, and thanks to the mayor and council for having me back this evening. And then, of course, just thanks to the mayor, council, city employees for everything they did for us during festival and leading up to festival. I think we've strengthened our relationship this year, and I look to, hope to see that for the rest of future years. I put some notes together here, so if I stumbled through it, I put it together rather quickly, so just stay with me. So again, just thanks on behalf of the Board of Directors to you all. Our events were tremendously successful this year. I think I saw a lot of you there. And if I didn't, again, just thanks for your support, and thanks to those who came out. A lot of our, we were kind of put in a weird situation where the mask mandate for indoors got lifted. As, I was actually standing beside the mayor at a coronation, I can't remember whether it was practice or actual coronation, but the mask mandate for indoors got lifted if you were vaccinated then. So that put us in kind of a different situation than what we had even planned for. But as we did all year, we adapted and we made it work. We just want to say thanks to the people who worked with us on that, the first responder agencies here in Buchanan and Upsher County, St. Joseph's, and Community Care. We vaccinated over 100 people at our vaccination clinic that we had during festival, so that was awesome. We had a record high attendance at our cruise inn and a huge turnout for our craft show. Very successful band for, band and entertainment performances. Our events ran a lot more smoothly than in past recent years, and we were happy to be able to provide multiple children's activities since they haven't been able to get out a whole lot. Our board shared memories at our wrap-up meeting that we had on Tuesday night. Festivals passed, and we do that a lot, it just kind of helps us come back to our roots and realize what we're there for. And we kind of joked that we hoped someday that the 110th Festival Board of Directors would share a memory when they danced and played in Jawbone with Professor Bubbles, took part in the largest minor chord to date, sang at Strawberry Idol, and were crowned the Jawbone Pool of Hoop Champion. Our modified festival was really a blessing in disguise to us. We think a lot of people enjoyed it who came out. We were fortunate to have a very progressive group of individuals who heavily focused on our finances and the quality of our events. It really paid off for us. We made changes where needed, and we also preserved our important festival traditions. We made improvements in accountability, financial standards, and operations. And I think I've even convinced some people that the changes we made helped and changed our traditional rainy weather for this year, too. Planning's already began for the 80th, and it's in full swing. We're planning for a full festival. We have a lot of work to do ahead of us. And again, I just can't say thank you enough to the community, the Board of Directors, and everyone who came out and supported us this year. We put a strawberry back on the map in West Virginia, and I'm proud of that. We gave a community hope, relief, and inspiration. In a time of quiet darkness and frowns, we created sound, light, and smiles. We did what many people said we couldn't do, and I'm proud to say that we did it safely and efficiently. As some of you know, our, our elections are approaching, so there could be a potential that the next time you see a representative here from festival, it could be someone different. If that's the case, I just want to thank you all for everything that you've done for me and for festival. And just as a side note, the festival has talked briefly about the World Association of Marching Bands event that will happen in 23, and we're fully on board to help without however we need to. So also, I have a card that I'd like to present to the mayor and council on behalf of the Board of Directors, just as a thank you for everything you did for us.
Sure, thanks Shane.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, you know, I'm a member of the Officer at the American Legion, and you know, we rented the Strawberry Festival this year a little small office, because they needed an office. And, and I want to say thank you and thank them all, because, yep, it was fine, okay? It was fine. Trash was an issue, but we, we got through it, and I hope that you all will continue, unless y'all find a bigger place for, a less expensive place to rent for your office. And I hope you'll continue using the little back office in the American Legion building.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it helps us, and it helps you all a little bit, too. So thank you.
Yeah, we were really happy to partner with you all, and we appreciate that and everything you all did.
Yeah, we got a very nice card, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane, I want to say I think you did an excellent job, and I was proud of the way everything was handled. I think everybody was just thrilled to death to be able to get out and visit, and the kids felt, you know, were safe down their Jawbone, and I think it was an excellent idea to put the vendors down there. I think the people actually probably made a lot more money there than they had otherwise. But down the road, I would love to see, and the Strawberry Festival will get a permanent home. They need a permanent home instead of just hopping from one place to another and having to pay the rent. So hopefully down the road, the city can maybe help out with that, too, because other, other festivals, big festivals, have their own headquarters, and that's what the Strawberry Festival needs.
All right, thank you.
And hopefully you'll be president again.
I agree, thank you.
Well, I think from the city's perspective, we want to thank you all, too, for working with us. And I know that from your board, yourself and Gary Cannell, and both Carrie and Alan Mills came to us and worked with us on changing some of the Friday and Saturday night cadence, you know, just to kind of change it up a little bit. I want to thank CJ and Randy from the city's perspective in helping, in helping get Jawbone to become the centerpiece for the festival. I think everybody I talked to all week, all week and weekend long was very, very, very positive about Jawbone being used and hoped that it stayed used in the future. So I hope that that's something that we can continue to, to improve and modify and, and continue to, to make a centerpiece for the festival when it comes to vendors and entertainment. So I appreciate on behalf of the council, the, the board, working with us and us working with the board to make that possible.
I spent a lot of time in Jawbone and up on Main Street both Friday and Saturday, and heard a lot of great feedback. The, I think Jawbone is very, very well received as a great location, a lot of different age groups. As you mentioned, Mr. Bubbles was a big hit. The food vendors seemed to be happy, I'm sure there were some rumbles here or there. There's some people that can never, you know, never sell enough fries and never sell enough this and that and everything else. But from what I, you know, heard from the different people I spoke to, they were thrilled. And I'd like to thank Jerry and his crew, Brad Hawkins and everyone else that pitched in and helped from the city standpoint. And the two entities cooperated together nicely, first responders, Chief, Chief Audrey and Chief Kimble, and everyone else involved. I just think it was a very well-coordinated event from start to finish. And back in the day, you know, before you were born, I was involved with a lot of the earlier festivals. And I know the, I know the responsibility it takes to shoulder that event, to produce that event, so well done.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful if we have a joint meeting of some kind and go over feedback from our end. I know there was some electrical challenges, I don't know anything about the chief. But sit down and have an open conversation about, from our perspective, your perspective, and how can we do this better together?
Yep.
So if there's an opportunity to schedule something, I don't know whether we can do it through City Hall or something, but the sooner the better before we forget about it and start planning for next year.
I agree, and I've had that brought to my attention already, too, from board members that like to meet and kind of brainstorm again like we did before, so.
Yeah.
Good. Record that.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any last?
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Please extend our thanks to all the board members, too.
I will.
Thank you.
And of course, as, as Recorder Sanders mentioned, we, you know, every year, the Strawberry Festival does not happen without our city employees, street department, sanitary department, you know, all, all of our police and fire. We, everybody is all hands on deck to produce this festival. You know, it's, the board members do an excellent job, and then our city employees do equally. I was downtown Sunday, and you couldn't even tell there was a festival.
No, there isn't.
Never, you never can, so we thank our, our employees. Dennis, you're up next with the report from the Parks and Recreation Board.
Thank you. Doesn't matter if I keep my mask on, can you hear me clear enough?
You, you can.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I've been laid off for the last three days with a bad, the worst cold I've had in decades. Just recovering today, and I don't want you to blame it.
Yeah, keep your mask on.
Yeah, please.
Turn around the other way. Sorry, guys.
Now you got my glasses plugged up, keep me laughing. All right, we, report from the, from Upsher County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, 10 May 2021. Rachel Weber announced that the contest for the Gnome Gardens is over, but there are still a few sites that folks can use. Josh and a couple of other folks walked the course that will be used for the Disc Golf. He reported that we are still waiting for approval from the Board of Ed because a corner of the course will be on their property, and the equipment is not here yet. Julia reported that the proposed course for new bike trails will have to be altered because there's a swamp to the south of the high school, and there is a drainage problem near the pavilions. Avoiding the swamp could probably mean that there would be two sets of trails instead of one. Also, the trails are two-way, so folks need to be diligent when bikers and walkers are near each other. It was noted that most folks are already doing this. It was reported that there is now enough stain to do all six kiosks. And work, work on that is going to be started any day now. Under the financial report, the Trails has about $3,100 in their account, and Parks and Recs have about $700 in their account. Josh reported that there is a group wanting to use the basketball courts, and they want to have a fundraiser in July. This board is looking for more info about the times and place for this fundraiser. And there will be all new backboards very soon. There will be a new little library mounted on a pole near the pavilions. If you have a book, you can just leave it in the library, and you may take one also. Dennis reported that the Board of Ed has approved the new sign to be placed a little ways down the drive to the high school. It will be near the new kiosk and picnic table already there. Dr. Almond was given a copy of the picture that Dennis put together, and he passed this on to the board. Later, a copy was given to Ed Vincent, and he passed it along to Tim Durico, who called Dennis about an hour prior to the meeting. Mr. Durico informed the advisory board the sign will be installed by the Board of Ed, and maybe they will make it also. Dennis passed this along at the meeting. Mr. Durico stated that the Board of Ed has no problem with this project. And the next meeting will be on the third Monday of June, which is 21 June 2021, at 5:30 PM at the pavilions, weather permitting. This change, this change from the second Monday to the third is for one month only, and it is due to a scheduling conflict. The June and July reports will have to be delivered to the city in July, respectfully submitted by Dennis P. Corris. And you can hear my voice cracking.
Yes.
Stuff's still not 100%.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis, for the report.
Thanks, like it's moving forward.
Why, why don't you go home and get some rest?
Yeah.
No, why didn't I think of that?
I don't know.
Oy!
There you go.
All right, thanks, Dennis.
Hope you feel better, buddy.
Speaking, you mentioned Dr. Almond, so this case you didn't, no, Dr. Almond's wife, Ariselli, passed away. And actually, I think her service is at 2 AM tonight, because it's being done in the Philippines, and that's like 1 o'clock PM their time. So it's going to be broadcast online, and we also lost Kim Linsicum here recently.
Really?
Yeah, Kim passed away, she had cancer, so, but, okay. Yes, she did. All right, our Public Works Director is up, Jerry Arnold. Our resident Bana White has.
Very long report, so I hope you all settled in for the. We were approved to submit the applications for the West Virginia DOH grants. That's blanked down in your packet under strategic. Street, we are finishing light poles on Gateway West, and the crews started demolition on North Canal Street sidewalk. Sewer continues to work on North Spring Street project. The water crews, the hydrant flushing's completed, they've made repairs to seven hydrants, and they have two additional waiting for parts for the repair. Under waste, again, Jeff Womsley will be retiring, June 4th is his last day, so Jeff's on vacation right now. Must be nice to be on vacation and go straight to retirement. He is coming back, he's coming back week after next, so he'll be with us for a week before he takes his retirement. So again, if you see Jeff, wish him well on his retirement. Mayor, that's all I have under my report, there's nothing new under engineering, that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Let's go ahead and take up the approval to submit the grant applications for the DOH F3 and F4 while you're up there.
Okay, F, F3 is, is, the grant is for acquiring right of way for the Thank You Poundstone Trail Extension. It's actually extension number five, which is from Moore Avenue to the high school. And that grant, again, is just exactly what it says, it's for rights of ways. Now, it would be, preliminary budget number is about $100,000. So we would be, if successful in obtaining the grant, we would be responsible for contributing 20% of that as a match. So we would be, for that grant, we would have a responsibility of $20,000 upfront on that. And again, that would be one solely for acquiring the rights of ways, and then with the thought that the following year we'll submit for design construction on that. So that's the first one. And I will need, in that, I know it's not part of the actual written line, but I'll need authorization from the mayor to sign a, a letter of support from the city for those grants as well. That's one of the requirements of the grant.
Do you need a motion to set, submit? Yes, sir.
And move that we submit the grant application.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Almond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike's not opposed.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, that is for F3, so, you know, we'll go to F4.
F4 is, again, applying to West Virginia UH for grant funding for design and engineering for sidewalks on Morton Avenue and North Locust Street, Morton Avenue sidewalk from First Street to Locust Street, and the Locust Street sidewalk would be from crossroads or the Walmart intersection out to the Lowe's area. And that project for design, and, and again, this is just for design and engineering, is at a estimated cost of around $75,000. So again, our 20% match, if successful in securing the grant, would be about $15,000 commitment from council for that. Jerry, when you're handling those sidewalks, is there any thought to have some green space with that at all? Or is that not practical thing to do? At those locations, Dave, or those two, it is very tight to get, particularly with, well, actually both of them, because you're, you've got a federal access with the overpass, so that's extremely tight there. You will have continued green space with, in front of the power, there where the, the power transmission center is there by Walmart. There'll, there'll be some green space continued there. But again, most of that is paved areas, and Morton Avenue, you have just enough, if, if they allow us to put it on the south side of Morton Avenue, which is the most logical area for sidewalk, you have just enough room there with the berm to build up a raised sidewalk, and then it goes to a pretty steep drop-off from there on the backside. So, you know, you have green space to the back of the sidewalk, but no, there's not much, on those particular projects, there's not going to be much for green space between the sidewalk and the, and the street there.
And move that we submit the grant application for F4.
Second. Second by Mr. Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks, sir.
Jack? Passes unanimously.
Boy, you're a mind reader, how about that? You can predict the future.
Thank you. Okay, and we just want to, for the, for the benefit of our viewers and folks, you know, there, these, the DOH is involved because Morton Avenue is technically considered a state route through our community. And of course, Route 20 is a state route, so the DOH has this matching program that we can take advantage of for these sidewalks. It, it's not available everywhere in town because not, not everywhere touches a, a, a state highway. But Morton Avenue is considered one, as is North Locust Street Route 20, so that's, that's how we're able to, to work through this. Thank you, Jerry, for your report. Ann Beryl Jenkins is up next with our finances.
Barry's getting in the act.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
You got to y'all, Barry.
Okay, I'll give you your reports for the month of April for the enterprise funds. Waste Collection Board Money Market Checking, $812,618, CD and Savings, $58,033. Water Boards Money Market and Checking, $848,981, CD and Savings, $386,243. Noted this in the last meeting, I'm noting it in here, the money market and checking has $475,000 in it that we closed out of CD expired, and we are going to renew that in a savings account. Sanitary Board Money Market and Checking, $712,571, CDs and Savings, $253,190. And the next meeting, I plan on asking the board to allow me to take about $50,000 out of their money market and checking and put it into a working capital funds where required by the PSC. Stormwater Fund is $145,563. Invoices in your bills to be approved that I want to note are the, we expensed $20,000 to the Upsher County Airport Authority, as you had requested. $2,000 to the West Virginia Municipal Home Rule Board for annual, their annual fee. $4,196 to Interstate Rescue for thermal cameras for the Fire Department. The other items I wanted to tell you about, the Fire Civil Service Met on May the 6th, and they're reviewing the Fire Civil Service Commission rules. They're getting ready to update those, and that'll be presented to council when they finish. Police Civil Service Commission met, and they began the process to accept applications to replenish their eligibility list for probationary police officers. Applications for that will be accepted until June the 18th. The Colonial Theater Board met on May the 14th and appointed the Chair as John Walsh and Vice Chairperson as Erica Koenig. They also worked on their mission statement, they, they drafted a mission statement, and they worked on operational logistic policies. The Recorder Sanders, the mayor, and myself attended the regional information session hosted by Region 7 regarding the American Rescue Plan Funds. There were representatives there from Senator Manchin's office, the US Treasury Department, and Auditor McCuskey was actually there. The funds that the municipalities and counties receive will be very, very closely watched, they made that very clear. They're going to give us a special software to keep track of that, and they want a separate fund and a separate checking account for that. These, this'll be very transparent, many other municipalities will see what we're doing and we'll see what they're doing. The, what we came out of that with, that we were trying to get guidance on how the funds could be expended, was much of what we already learned before. The water sewer, stormwater broadband projects fit in those EPA clean water standards, and they have a good chance of being approved for the use of these funds. After those, after that, we had some discussions with Mr. Arnold, our engineer Jay Holland, the mayor, Recorder Sanders and myself, but seeking the Water and Sewer Department supervisors to look at their prioritized projects, the big ones, and to bring those back, and then there'll be further discussion with that in meetings. We're, we're going to try to work on that quickly so that we can try to be prepared for when that money does come in to us. Council will have decisions to make on that when it gets to be that time. We are currently in, in an audit. There can, they're, right now, they're still in the preliminary stages of asking for documents that they need to start the audit. It's virtual for the most part again this year. We'll have one, I believe, site visit where she'll, she or he will come down and actually go through some of our records, but I've been scanning items and sending them back and forth to the other, but we're in an audit right now for the year, fiscal year 2019 and '20. And I believe that's all I had to tell you tonight. Any questions?
Any questions for Amy?
So I guess we didn't learn much in the meeting, other than what we already do.
I learned a little about it, some, some logistics on, on that, the, the funds and how they'll be sent to an account. They're going to send them to the Oasis account, which actually comes into the general fund. So I, I'm, I'm going to call the auditor's office about that, because we have to keep them in a separate fund. But as far as clarification, there were some questions came up, detailed questions, and about 80% of the answer was they weren't sure. It, it definitely is infrastructure, it's definitely in the broad range of how does that mitigate or help the coronavirus, you know, life, safety issues, Health Department.
Then we had a composting project at the Waste Department that never got facilitated, maybe something?
Yeah, I think you, you have to be pretty creative to figure out how that's going to probably be COVID-related. For sure, we have water and sewer projects. We got 2.24 million, though that number changed a little bit from the last time, so they tweaked it. 2.24 million for the city of Buchanan.
We don't want to give any of it back.
It, it will not go back. If you're talking water and sewer projects, you could basically put that in one department, and they, they have projects to work on, that, that those, those projects are.
That's exciting.
Yes, I'm glad, I'm happy for it.
It's 4.6 for the county?
Yes, 4.6 for the county, 2.24 for us.
Well, since they don't have take care roads or sewer or water, they're going to have a little more challenges.
I talked to them a little bit about it, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they're going to use that money wisely in the county where it's needed.
Yeah, great.
That'll be. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. All right. Police Chief Matt Gregory, who's.
Boy, one more day.
Yeah, waiting, this is, this is what's standing in between him and vacation, so.
That is.
Everybody in.
You want to wait, you want to wait to hear this report?
Crime, any activity crime-wise is canceled until, you know.
Yeah, we're just going to shut it down.
Yep.
Actually, everybody already stole my thunder, I had something here about the Strawberry Festival and the police applications, and they've all reported on that, so.
Have a good trip.
Just a couple other things real quick. We did receive our final report regarding our CLIA. our CLIA assessment. I did not include it in the packet because it's a voluminous report, it's about 41, 42 pages.
What's that?
Very good report, very good marks for the city of Buchanan, no compliance issues profound, of course, that was something that we had gleaned from the exit interview when the assessment occurred, but this final report reflected that in writing. And so, that is available should anyone want to review that at either here at City Hall or at the police department. Just according to what Shane had said earlier, the Strawberry Festival went very well this year from a police perspective, we had no major issues. Really, the one issue that was brought to my attention early Saturday morning was just a few parking issues on Main Street when they were trying to shut the street down. I worked with my staff in the Strawberry Festival to remedy that pretty quick. Other than that, there were a few calls that day, none of which were festival related, they were all just other matters. James Fisher is set to graduate from the State Police Academy next Friday. He will, at that point, begin the process of field training, which lasts for 12 weeks. He will be assigned to, our field training program rotates them between two different field training officers over the course of that 12 weeks, and he'll be assigned to Sergeant Hissom first. At the same time, Jacob Garrison is scheduled to take his physical agility entrance exam for the police academy next week on May 25th. He is currently on the alternate list for the class beginning on May 31st, so we've got our fingers crossed that he will be invited for full admittance that week. We've had other officers in the past on the alternate list and they have gotten called up that first week, so we're hoping that the same will be for Garrison. He, like Fisher, he will be at the academy for 10 weeks, they're still keeping him there the entire time, and if he goes on May 31st, he will be scheduled to graduate on August 6th, and he, like Fisher, will return to field training at that point. And other than the, Amby reported we're taking applications for eligibility list, currently we don't have any, anybody on the list of eligibles, so we're just testing to replenish that and applications are being accepted until June 18th. And mayor, that's all I have unless there's questions.
Matt, on the 28th, is that, will he be graduating physically down in Charleston at the police academy, or are they doing it?
Yeah, just, that's just his last day, no actual ceremony this year again because of that, the bubble they created, they're moving one class out and just a matter of a couple of days, they're moving another one in, so no ceremony.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Congratulations on the.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Have a great vacation.
Where are you going?
Out west.
Out west.
That's all you need in house. Don't tell, don't tell us anything else.
Have you checked to see if you have any nest on your front light?
What's that?
Have you checked to see if any birds nest on your front light?
Completely changed my front light, it faces down now instead of up.
I got a bird, I got a, I got a bird nest on mine.
Do you? Yeah.
We'll call Chief Kimble just to have him make sure.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Have a nice night.
Extra patrols around chief's house.
Chief isn't wearing a mask anymore, he's going to have to shave again.
Yeah.
No, we're. No, you do it too because you play the 12 if you don't, he looks like he's about.
You don't look much like him.
No, I feel it, trust me.
Easy, Mayor. I just want to report on a couple of things before we later talk about a couple of strategic matters. Back last year in, I think it was November, December, the city was made a defendant in a federal civil rights lawsuit against an individual by the name of Bryce Braxton who was arrested by the police department some time ago, a couple of years ago. Anyway, earlier this week, that lawsuit was dismissed for lack of merit and so we're kind of clear of that and appreciate the efforts of our outside counsel that was retained by the insurance carrier who represented us in that matter. It was the, and it was actually the county commission who was a co-defendant with us, it was their attorney who filed the motion to dismiss. Magistrate Judge Alloy sitting over in Elkins recommended that the matter be dismissed and Judge Cleat in Clarksburg adopted the recommendation of Judge Alloy, and so it's, the matter is dismissed and because of just the way that Mr. Bryce handled the lawsuit, he is not eligible to appeal the matter to the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, so that matter is for all intents and purposes concluded. And in addition, I think there was a mention of it earlier, I'd attended the, an FLSA seminar that took four days last week, a lot of very good information in that, actually, in any event, some good information to help, it was FLSA for fire departments, and as we kind of move forward with some issues, it'll be very, very helpful thing. So with that, I'd have to take any questions.
Any questions? How's the 9th and 50th problem?
We are closing on that tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock.
Great.
Great, good job.
They approved, this afternoon, they approved the settlement statement that I wrote up and approved the deed, so we'll be, they'll be here tomorrow morning to take care of that.
So, in our conversations that we've had with some folks in council and some groups about the development of the Chase Drive-Thru property on Madison and Lincoln Street, there, it's been discussed about a potential property swap with one of the homeowners there.
Okay, I've not been part of any of those discussions.
Okay. It's not on the agenda tonight, but I just.
That means you can't make any decisions about it, we can talk about it, but you can't, just can't make any, councils can't make any decisions about it. This, I've not been part of any discussions on that side.
All right, well, we'll bring you up this now and then we'll get it, have a discussion and make some decisions down the road, but I want to try to at least get some, something, some idea of where we're headed, you know?
Sounds good. All right, thanks, Tom, we'll see you here in just a second.
All right.
Okay. We've got a, the mayor's been busy doing proclamations for Strawberry Festival Week, so there's a few of those in your packet, for one, for Wilbur Grub Day, firefighter recognition friendly way day, National Nurses Week and National Hospital Week. We've got a notice of public hearing for the city council about ordinance 451, which we'll take up the second reading here in just a moment. We've got applications, we just discussed that with Jenkins. We've got, we've got, I want to bring council back to thinking about this again, we've got a notice of special meeting of the planning commission for the request of their consideration for the rezoning of 67 South Canal Street from an R2 to a C2, or a zone district. That's going to be on Tuesday, June the 1st. Memorial Day is the 31st, so Tuesday, June the 1st, that meeting of the planning commission will take place here. So then we've got, I believe it's, is it a seven?
Yes.
It's a seven, yeah. We've got a letter from the state auditor, guidelines on the allocation of funds in the American Rescue Plan Act, Amby touched on that, that Mr. Sanders, myself and her went down to Flatwoods to hear some information about that. We've got the 52nd Annual Conference of the West Virginia Municipal League, August 3 through 6, it's up at Ogilvy and Wheeling. Would of course encourage any council members that would like to attend to do so. Municipal League is a great organization and it's always a good time to, it's more fun than it sounds to talk shop with your fellow council members and mayors from around the state, so put that on your calendar. We've got two letters, and I called it alphabet soup earlier this evening, but they're relative to the region FEMA Region 3 Hazard Mitigation Project Emergency Power Generators Grant that Jay has been working on. And then finally, we've got a street paving bid advertisement in your packet as well. Under the consent agenda, we've got the approval of the regular meeting minutes of the 15th of April and the 6th of May. Then we've got approval of building and wiring permits and we've got the approval of the payment of bills. If there are no additions or corrections to the minutes and if we accept the building and wiring permits and payment of bills, that entertain a motion that we pass the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second, I think Jack made a motion.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
Second, I'm sorry.
All right, I give it to Jack. Alba and Jack, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Likes, sign opposed?
Can I oppose, can I abstain from 15th, April 15th?
Which, which point? Because we passed the consent agenda as E1, 2, and 3, so would, would you, do you want us to go through and?
I don't want to, I want both know on the approval of mail through the 15th of April.
There's something wrong with them?
Well.
Why'd you say why?
Because I feel some, something was left out that I feel should have went in the minutes.
Okay, tell us, tell, well, there's a, hold on, there's a parliamentary issue here, if I can. When you're dealing with a consent agenda, the appropriate motion would be to remove an item from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately.
Okay.
And then, and then Councilwoman Buckle could then vote against that item. So, the motion would be to remove, it would be an order to entertain a motion to remove, I don't know which, which one, the 15th?
15th.
To remove the minutes from the April 15th meeting from the consent agenda. Then you would, and that, I think, because it's a consent agenda, it's, it just happens automatically because there's no longer consent. So, once that is removed from the consent agenda, the remainder of the consent agenda can just be voted on like normal and then you return to the item which has been removed from the consent agenda to vote on that separately.
All right, I move that we.
Well, what do we do with the motion?
We just did it, so.
Well, you could ask, through unanimous consent, you can just.
Okay.
Walk back that motion.
Okay, all right, so here, let's do this. I will go, let's do it this way, per guidance from our city attorney, under the consent agenda, you will take these individually, E1.
Well, first, yeah, let's do unanimous consent to walk back.
Are we, are we good, are we good to just take a step backwards and take the consent agenda one by one?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So move.
So the, so you don't need a motion to do that.
Jack, you consent?
Well, don't we need to reverse another motion?
Okay, all right, so we've done that.
Consent is to.
Now you need a motion to review it.
A motion to, well, you don't really need a motion to do it, just a member of the council just needs to express that they want a matter removed from the consent agenda.
Which we have.
Which we have.
Okay.
Which is the matter of 15th.
Right, okay. All right. E1, I would entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting for April the 15th singularly.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rylands, we have a second by Mrs. Alba, is there discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I think we need a discussion on it. Go ahead. Because Pam, you're not pleased with the minutes as they.
Who made the motion?
Are on the 15th.
CJ.
I just don't approve the minutes because it's not included.
It's not included, I didn't understand that, or did I?
Did you not read the minutes?
Not here today, no.
Okay. Now, the conversation.
Oh, April 15th. They were sent out by email.
The conversation that Bryson Van Oostren had toward me is not going to be in the meeting, not going to be in the minutes, and I feel that need to be in the minutes.
I covered the action, I covered the business action there.
Because he's an employee of the city.
He's not, he's not an employee of the city.
Yes, he is.
No, no, he's not.
We pay him every month.
He's a subcontractor.
Subcontractor, not a contractor.
He's an, he's an officer of the city, as the city architect, and he's, and he's compensated as an, as an.
He is an officer of the city.
His company is.
His company.
Yeah.
Well, I just.
So what's that?
I don't approve of the minutes, that's all I wanted to do, you say, I didn't approve them.
Okay, well, you can vote, yeah, vote against them.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the, on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye for E1, approval of the regular meeting minutes for April 15th only. All right?
Aye.
Okay, likes, sign opposed?
Aye.
Uh-uh.
Okay, so let the record reflect that council members, Rigor, Rylands, Alba, and Sanders approve of the minutes of April 14, of April 15th, and Councilman Thomas and Council Lady Buckle do not approve.
No, I'd like to have a clarification.
Well, we, we, we've, we've passed it and.
I understand that, but I'd still like to have a clarification. When Randy says that he did the, what was an action, what, what is sustained, what's required?
I can explain the way I present it and then you can question me. I present it from the standpoint of I cover the business actions of the, of council. If finances are involved, I go into great detail. If, if there's personalities involved, I'm not trying to write editorials, I'm not trying to write, I'm not trying to go into the Inquirer, I'm not trying to go he said, she said, I think 10, 20, 30 years from now when people pick up that document, they're to read that document and take from it the actions and the business of this city. And now, as I said, if there's finances, dollars and cents involved, then you need to go into great detail. If you watch, I watched the video of that meeting several times, I discerned the nuts and bolts of what happened in both the highly contentious actions and activities that took place during that meeting, one had to do with property and possible zoning changes. I did not go into word by word, it was not a deposition. If it was to be a deposition, you go word by word. If I went word by word, it would be interesting, there would be misuse of the English language, there would be some awkward moments if I did that, quite honestly, by many, many, many people. So I gave an overview of the actions of every element of the meetings every time. And again, I get very detailed when it comes to finances of the city, when it comes to things of I said, she said, he said, they said, it's not the National Enquirer. That's the approach that I take.
Randy, the, now, if a person were to come in and wanted to do some research on what has transpired during council meetings, how long, how long do we keep the recordings? Is there a timeline that we meet, or are they always going to be on?
I think, I think.
Once the minutes are there, the part of history.
The minutes or the permanent records?
Yeah. But if a person wanted to look at something beyond the minutes, are they, can they do that?
YouTube is out there forever, I mean, as long as YouTube's going to be around, and you know, again, you can look at that, I would invite you to look at the recording, you know, watch the recording.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing what you did.
No, no, that's fine, I mean, somebody else may want to sit down and actually do verbatim. They may want to take the two hour, three hour meeting and actually dictate it, word by word, and like I said, once you translate that, English teachers around the county would be, you know, you know, because the diction and misuse of the English language and so on.
It should be put in there why Mr. Van Oostren thought that I was not eligible to be on that committee.
And I'm the one that asked him why.
Okay, exactly. So, I'm not saying the whole conversation, but I would, I would like for it being in there why he, why he stated that, that I would not be on, did not want to be on that, that he did not want me on that committee. When the council. When the council, Mary is the one who brought it up, said two people from city council should be on that committee, and Mr. Thomas agreed.
Well, then I would have, you know, well, then it gets into back and forth, then we'd have to put in why you felt certain people shouldn't be on there when, when you took a swat at, at Renee Preston, you know? So, I mean, you can, you can...
But I'm a councilperson, she wasn't.
Get along, you, this thing could get back and forth.
That's my reason, but it's over with.
Yeah.
But you made that clear.
I probably thought it was over with.
Well, no, but...
No, it's not over with.
She made, she made, Pam's made it clear how she felt about it.
Right.
I don't have a problem with it.
And that's fine, I mean, you can challenge the way I write the minutes, and that's no problem whatsoever.
I didn't ask for the whole thing to be on it, I'm just saying, yes, the council...
But if you, if you go down, it's a slippery slope. If you want to go down and have a deposition, you can have a deposition, and, and, you know, enter word by word what's in there if you get to try to get a clear picture of what was said, so.
I don't disagree with how you, how you're doing it, Randy, I just wanted to try to get a...
Sure, but that's the explanation.
But I'll have to just share something. A number of years ago, when there were minutes, the minutes said that I said something in a meeting, which I didn't say. And I asked the council to retract what was in the minutes I had not said, they all refused, which I thought was very interesting.
Right.
So a lot of time, a lot of times, you know, you can have very heated subjects among elected officials, and people can gang up on one or two elected officials and make things look pretty ugly.
Sure.
So I just wanted to get this out, that, that what happened, okay?
Sure, well, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, my pleasure.
I think, yeah, I think the council appreciates your...
Thank you.
Sure, your work.
Okay. Now, we still have a consent agenda to get to.
I also have a consent agenda.
Yes, we, we have other matters, okay. We now need to approve the regular meeting minutes of May the 6th, 2021. I entertain a motion that we approve those.
So move? And the building, wire permits, and the payment of the bills.
We have to do, no, you have to do everyone now because we're a consent agenda part.
No, you...
Or you don't?
You just do the rest.
Okay.
There's nothing else that's to remove.
Okay, so...
I think we do the rest.
Okay, the, the rest being the minutes of the, of the May 6th, approval of the building and wiring permits, and approval of the payment of the bills. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes, sign opposed?
Aye.
He approves.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we are down to strategic, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
It's worth its weight in gold, hey?
Thanks, everybody.
Good thing it's not my weight.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it'll work. Okay, strategic issues for, strategic issues for discussion and or vote. Teresa and I spoke about this, so this was not, the Academy School, the way our consolidated agenda falls, they, this, this event that they're having up on Smithfield Street is actually the day of the Consolidated Public Works meeting, but it's earlier in the afternoon. So Academy Elementary School is requesting to close Smithfield Street, just a block between East Victoria and College Avenue, for an event that they're having from 1:30 to 2:45 to celebrate the end of school year with their staff chair races. So I entertain a motion that we grant Academy School their request.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bucklew, we have a second by Mrs. Alba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 What's a staff chair?
I don't know.
Is this, are they roll you in a chair?
It's a fun thing for the kids, they, they race and the staff races in chairs.
You couldn't have done that a month and a half ago.
Why, because there was snow on the ground?
No, because of the street, maybe going out of a pothole.
That's true.
Let the minutes, let the minutes, please.
We're holding this meeting together by duct tape and chicken wire at this point, so, okay. All right, we have one singular item remaining on our strategic issues for discussion and or vote, and it is the approval of ordinance 451, and it is a second reading. I will defer to Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council has reported ordinance number 451 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance 1, amending ordinance numbers 207, 228, 342, 369, and 392 of the City of Buchanan, and 2, specifically establishing new water rates and charges for water distribution services provided by the Water Board of the City of Buchanan. This is the second of three readings, and I note, as was noted earlier under correspondence, that the public notice for the public hearing to take place at the council's next meeting two weeks from tonight is, is being published.
Okay, we have, the council has unanimously approved the first reading, I would entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance 451 on second reading as presented by Mr. O'Neill. So move? We have a motion by Mr. Sanders, we have a second.
Second.
The second by Mrs. Alba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah, begrudging over here. I agree, I am with you.
We heard that all the way here.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're down to comments and announcements. We'll start over with Mrs. Alba. Anything for you? No?
No.
All right. Pam?
Nothing.
Okay. CJ?
I know that we've asked the State Highway Department about demarcating the crosswalks, you know, since we moved some of the takeoff and landing points of the, in the downtown, the crosswalks, they don't line up right. We also, you know, I've noticed that it's almost safer to jaywalk in the middle of the block than it is at the crosswalks because the cars that are turning 90 degrees sometimes the, seeing someone, their vision is obstructed or whatever. I'd like to try to get some signs up, I know that's a state highway, but yield to pedestrian in crosswalk, a little triangle somewhere, or just start pounding that message that, you know, if someone's crossing the street, you know, the person with the power and authority is the, is the vehicle, they should be yielding to the vulnerable person, so just wanted, would like to try to accent that somewhere.
Hello?
What was that?
Somebody does like CJ's request.
They're repainting, the DOH is repainting the, the yellow lines in the middle of the street, and that, that machine is loud.
Okay, and, and I concur with what you're saying, because I used to could walk across a fast four-lane and, you know, and hustle before they keep coming through, they'll come right at you when you're walking through there. We need something better than just yield or stops or something, I don't, I don't know. But people need to be safer too.
Anything else? Okay. Dave Thomas?
You're not going to want to hear what I'm saying.
No, we don't.
Come on, Dave, give it to us.
Let's go have a cocktail.
Mettler, world's one heckin' handbasket.
I, I'm the oldest person in this room, and I'm more disgusted with what I see in our country today, especially with the president. And his first day in office, he eliminates 11,000 jobs with the Keystone Pipeline, plus money more from the Sil Air. Today, he basically says, oh, it's okay for Russia and Germany to have a pipeline to get it for natural gas. And he said, we got to do it to keep our relationships going with Germany. What about Canada? That Keystone Pipeline was going to be a real important thing for Canada. Why hypocrites, politics, thanks. Y'all have a good weekend.
Cool, thank you, Dave. Jack?
I have nothing to share.
It was good to see you today. I saw Jack, Jack was out talking to myself and Brad Hawkins and Jerry Arnold on Main Street in front of our beloved Dairy Queen this after, this morning, so it was good to see Jack out and about, walking, so we hope that that continues and Jack's able to keep on walking further distances all the time, so.
Keep it up, Jack.
Keep it up, yes.
He's getting stronger today.
Randy?
And, well, I want to clarify, Robbie.
Yep.
I have to stay out of closed spaces. So I can be on the street, I just can't come to the city council or Bucklew or Walmart or places like that, I don't worry about it.
We understand that, so.
Yep.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, I, as I said to Mr. Jenkins when he gave a report on Strawberry Festival, I really enjoyed the Strawberry, West Virginia Strawberry Festival this year, I was a big part of it for many, many years, so I enjoyed being a spectator, just enjoying and absorbing it and, and listening to things, I enjoyed that, enjoyed the trip down to Flatwoods to listen to what they didn't know yet about the American Recovery Act, but in talking to the supervisors the last couple of days with Ambi and the mayor and Jerry Arnold, getting a feel for the project that maybe we will be able to, to get off of the back burner, onto the front burner. It's exciting, in, in the scope of things, it's going to free up a little bit more of the funds that Buchanan has for some other things, it's an exciting time. I appreciate everyone around this council table, and this is a proud town, it's a proud city, so together, all of us can have some good days ahead, you know, so let's just roll over sleeves and keep at it. Mayor, we appreciate your efforts.
Sure.
And let's make this summer a good one.
Absolutely, I, I agree.
Amen.
I don't, I don't have any, anything majorly prepared, prepared this evening, I just want to thank again the Strawberry Festival for a great weekend. Thank Create Buchanan for, and the volunteers for putting up our Wall of Valor banners yet again. They, I walked through Jawbone Park today, they look great. So thanks to CJ and Scott and Renee Preston, I saw Facebook, saw Chief Kimball down there painting the stage, so it takes a community effort to, to, to make things nice for our community. So I appreciate everybody that, that lent a hand in, in sprucing up Jawbone Park, and look forward to Festival Fridays, those are starting on June the 4th, that is the first one, Friday, June the 4th, so plan to come downtown and listen to some music this summer each Friday. And I just appreciate, of course, Ambi, I know Ambi is going to be under a lot of pressure as we get these funds in here, and it's, 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 when you're dealing with federal dollars, you get to be very careful, and I, I have, we are very fortunate in this community because we have Ambi, we, and I know that the council, we have all the faith and trust in the world in Ambi, and it makes our job so much easier.
Yep.
Because we, we don't have to ever worry if, if something's not right, because Ambi will, if Ambi doesn't know it, Ambi will find out and won't stop until she finds out, so I, I know that Ambi's got a lot of work ahead, and we all have a lot of work ahead, but we're going to do the very best we can to improve our city's infrastructure with the money that we're about to receive, so.
Mayor, did, did we thank all those people that donated to help the money to redo the murals? I think we're two of them done, right?
I don't know that we did. CJ may know more about that than, I know that R26201 took on re, if you haven't seen it, the Evening Star painting on the side of, I still call it Lance Corey's building, Ed Koch would be upset with me for calling it that, but on, on the side of the Ameriprise Building on, on Main Street, you'll notice that it was quite faded, and it's been re, rehung, and it's, it's very nice, it adds a nice color pop on that end of the street. I don't know if you want to...
It was R26201, Create Buchanan donated $500, and we helped them do it. We just applied, this is a little higher grade vinyl with a UV clear protector, so should last 10 years instead of four or five, and we just put it right around the existing one, so it went on, two hours from start to finish, and it was all up. It actually, you know, we were concerned that the wood had warped and wouldn't fit back on the pins, but we dropped it right back on, so Bryson knows what he's doing.
All right.
You all have a good weekend.
Absolutely. At 8:34, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.